I would like to call the board on a work session for December 10th. And with that, Bob, you want to take it, or Denise?
Yeah, I can start. So, a couple of things from the board and community. First, we had some conversations with the superintendent, board chair, and vice chair meeting. I had requested in the meeting so that we could get together and talk about the priorities, because you have lots of them.
And we had shared with you also the needs that we see as a school district. And we wanted to make sure that we were clear on direction. And then also, we feel that there are places where they aren't competing needs, they're really -- so we wanted to have a conversation with you today to have, make sure that we are clear on direction for your priorities. And then share with you some, just more specific information with regard to some of the programming needs and how all of this can lead to a levy or referendum of some kind. And so, we have a format laid out, and as we went through this as a team, there were things that we thought, oh, this might be additional information or more information. But most of the information you're going to see today is things that you've already looked at. And we want to make sure when we're developing a plan that we're clear on that, so we can start working on timelines and budgets and all those kind of things. So with that, I just would like you to first take a quick look at the list of priorities that you created earlier this year.
Please, before you go on, do you want to mention that this --
Oh, sure.
Because I was looking at it, and I was like, what is this? I don't remember.
Sure, thanks Shelley. So you also have a list of separate priorities. These are comments from Director Riley. She couldn't be here today, so she sent this last evening, just so you could see her thoughts on some of the things we're going to be having conversations about. Also, if you would look at the board's top priorities for the school district, I just want to make a few comments on those, and then we're going to dig into them. The first is the comprehensive career tech pathway plan, including a communication plan for that. And with that career tech pathway, Rob Bach has shared a presentation, we had a work session, a presentation for the board, and is excited to get moving on trying to put the structures in place to make that happen. I think it'll be easiest for the board to think about that is, you know, this isn't something that happens in one year, it's multiple years. And how we are starting is revamping the whole registration book for parents and families. And you'll see that our team, Chris, has been working with Rob and others to be able to really redesign what that looks like, so it's a better experience and easier for our families and students to follow, based on their passions and their interests. And so, that's a big piece of this, this first year, is aligning the courses we have, working with 916 to see what possible pathways might be supported, and then that registration piece. What we had shared with the board, the piece about connecting with our community and those internships and long-term projection for this is probably a three- to five-year initiative to do it well. The second on the list is the smaller class sizes, and we've shared with you, you've gotten a report from me about your options, or options that we see as an administrative team that would be doable with class size. You have expanding collect -- the third, expand electives and redesign class period schedule at the secondary level. We know that we've heard from our community, our parents, our students, that that's something that would be really desirable. Those things can go hand in hand. They do have a little bit of a price or price tag, depending on how you do that. And so, we've got some information for you on scheduling that'll help you have some more perspective on that. I'm just going to go down through your first top 10 here. So the expand electives and redesign class periods at the secondary level could be part of that whole conversation with career and tech pathways. The comprehensive GT services, we'll need to know from the board more what that would mean. If we get to the place where you -- we need to have more conversation about what you mean as a board about that. And maybe that's a work session where we sit down and talk about, here are the things we already have in place, and what are the additional things that you might want to see based on the needs of our students and the data that we share. The systemic equity work, we already have a three-year plan for equity, but we're coming up to the next round of rebooting what that looks like. And so, the systems work in that has always been important to us, and I think that'll probably be something you're going to have to decide as a board, if you'd like to have a work session about, so we can spend some time with what we're currently doing and what the results are. Those of you who attended the world's first work, world's best workforce, Shelley, I see where I know where you're laughing about that. Those of you who attended that, you saw the results of the equity so far, but those of you who weren't in attendance, we want to make sure that you have a good knowledge of that also. Increasing declining test scores and strategies to improve, you've had two learning sessions, you've had one full learning session, limitless learning, that talks about what we're doing as a district. And then we have another one where we, as we mentioned, we'd like to have you sit down with schools that you're going to be a liaison towards, and sit down and learn a little bit more about their building plans and how that relates to PD and goals for teachers and outcomes for our students. Increasing student enrollment, that's something we need to have more conversation about what plan that might be. Right now, I think many of you know, we can't accept more kids in some of our schools because they're full, and others we do have room. So what might that look like? What are the specifics for that? And then desirable and sufficient learning places, you have a community design team who's working on that and going to be bringing forward a recommendation for you on that. And then finally, increasing parent engagement and communication. The community engagement working group has been working diligently on how are the, what are those places that we need to reach out into the community? So there are things that are happening in all of those, but those first 10 are really what we'd like to tackle first and then move on from there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McDowell and our team, and we're going to share more specifics on some of the things you've listed.
Sure. So the way, and we worked a little bit last week to try and figure out a flow for today so that it tried, it made sense. And so, the first page of your packet is an agenda for today. And what we really wanted to try and do is spend the first part of today talking about the priorities and pieces of that, and then make sure that we leave the last 45 minutes to really be able to jump into some direction with regard to the upcoming levy, referendum, bond, that type of discussion. So, the way that the packet is laid out is really coming from the angle of, we think that there are things that administratively and from the board seem to start connecting, and that we could get some momentum going. And so, I've tried to provide some supporting documentation for that, so that we could have some discussions leading back then to the priorities that the board has laid out. So, to begin with, if you look at the next two pages, the first page will look familiar. And this was the priorities that we gave the last two work sessions, I think I handed this out, which was really just a large list of, if someone came to us and said, from the programming standpoint, if you were going to be looking at priorities of what, if you couldn't do everything, what would you do? And that's simply what this list was. However, taking this list and pairing it up with the couple of the top board priorities, if you look at the next page, what we've done is we've pared that big list down into four items that would be, if any of you came to me and said, okay, you can't have everything even on this list, what would you look at doing just for next year if you could? So just for the 19, if you had to pare it down for 2021, what would that look like? So, here's what that list looks like. It would be looking at finding a way to reinstate some of the curriculum and PD money, so that we could keep moving through, even with some of the conversations that we've had as a result of the ELA curriculum, just what do we do strategically for the other curriculums that are coming onboard? What do we do for other professional development? So it would be looking at, how do we, how do we put about a half a million dollars back into that? So that also dovetails with one of the board conversations of, what's some stuff that we could put back into place that we ended up needing to cut to make it into this year? The second thing is the pathways program. And if you look across that line, what you're going to see is that the path, what we've outlined here is $214,000, which is the equivalent of two positions. And here's the reason why. We know that long-term, if we're having the conversations about pathways, we're really looking about what's going to look different at the high school in terms of programming, what's also going to look different then in terms of scheduling, what's also going to look different in terms of staffing. But if we back then all the way up to today, where that pathways team that gave you the presentation is at right now is, they've reached kind of that point in time where the work that needs to be done is a lot of legwork outside of the classroom. It's meeting with organizations, it's developing more partnerships, it's going out and figuring out, how do we start establishing this internship model? That's too much for a full-time teacher to be doing and be in the classroom. And so, that's where then you get back to this 214. In a perfect world, the team and myself would support, what we've seen in Moundsville and other districts, is most pathways programs have one to two to four people that really bring that whole pathways piece together in terms of providing more direction and alignment processes for you, the board, and that team, and us as we go about planning. So, all of that to say, the reason it's on here is, if we're seriously considering that in the long term, the goal is to have a pathways program in place, the team, and again, I support it, is saying, we're going to need some extra support to get someone, at least in this stage, to keep us on the trajectory to get there. And that's what this is about. The third piece then, is class size reduction. And I'm going to, I have a sheet that Kathy put together for us that I'm going to share with you, that articulates what some options here. And that's why you see the cost range where it is. And I guess when you see the sheet, you're actually going to, you're going to see that there's ability to be a little bit less than that. But really, what we've tried to do is answer the board's question of, what might it look like at varying entry points to provide some reduction to our elementary class sizes? Either in certain buildings, or across the board, different grade levels, and so we'll get into some detail about that. But that's kind of the price tag range that we'd be looking at that. And then lastly, special education district admin. If you remember, one of the reductions we made was to reduce the district level, so not at the buildings, but the district level administrative support. So this is the position that supports Paul Lee, Caroline, and Caitlin over at Oak Park. What we are finding, so we're kind of at that term in the year where you make decisions and then you go, okay, is this working? Are we able to handle it? Of all the cuts that we made, this is the one position where we're going, yeah, we're barely treading water. This probably was something that we bit off more than we probably should have, because the job, the scope of this job as full-time, it needs to be a full-time job, I guess is what I'm saying. So, again, this page is really to help the board understand, if you were to come to us and say, yeah, we can't do this, what would you need to be, have us consider for next year's short term? These would be the top four items. And so, the remainder of the packet then, is the supporting documentation for those items. So if you look at the next three pages, they're all, they all say literacy adoption for 2019. So, I will spend a ton of time on this one, because on Thursday, we're going to have a work session specific to this. But one of the things the board asked for, and that's why I have it in here, was, is there a way that the team could break down the costing of the literacy, the secondary literacy program? Because the way that we had presented it just seemed to be more confusing than helpful. And so, Rachel and Karen came up with a three-document piece that we hope, and so you're going to have to give us some feedback, because if we need to change something for Thursday, we can. But the first page is the total cost. So you'll see at the bottom, it's $502,000. And then, page, the next two pages really break down, first one being, just the cost for 1920, so that's titled at the top. And so, you'll see that that comes to $160,000. And then, the third page is, what's the remaining cost? And you'll see at the bottom of that page, the 341. So, as you're kind of taking a glance at this, again, the purpose of this document was a second stab at, do we have a document that is more helpful for you as a board in terms of the cost that's associated with the secondary literacy curriculum? Because when all is said and done, it's one of the priorities that we'd like to get, get taken care of is that.
So, the total really amounts to about $300,000? If you add the three?
Nope. The second two pages equal the first page. So the first page is the total.
Total cost.
And then if you broke it out and said, kind of the discussion, Mike, that we've had before, if you said, you're not going to be able to do it in one year, let's stage this thing. The way we would stage it is about 160 in the first year, so, so right now, implementation now, and then the 340 for next year, the 2021 school year. That's the way we would look at it. So that's why this is in there.
Okay, so the page three says the remaining cost for implementation 2020 through 2022.
Yep.
So would it be a stacky over two more years?
Yeah, it would be the total over those two years, but it would start in 20. So if we were able to take care, I'm sorry if I confused that, Mark. If we started the 160 this year, so we spend 160 to get through the remainder of this year, then starting in 2021, we would do a two-year finish. It would take two years to finish it, but that would be the cost for that.
Okay, so would the budget impact be spread out over two budget cycles?
It would be actually, yeah. Or at least two of our budget, budgeting years, yeah. And it could be, and why I would say it that way, if you look at how we rolled out elementary literacy, what we ended up doing after the first year was, if there were dollars in our budgets that we didn't spend somewhere else, we took those dollars and we tried to push through as much as we could in that first, or that second year, so that we had a little bit left in the third. So, it would ebb and flow.
And how much of this is currently supported by the budget?
The 160,000 we have in the budget right now. So, and that's a great question, because remember, that's that whole, that's where we get, where people kind of get confused, and it's the, we approve a total budget, so a sandbox of curriculum. And what we're saying is, because in this case, secondary literacy is more than the $50,000, it's coming to the board, so that the board says, yes, well, we're willing to make a total investment of 160. Because what we can't do is, we can't bring 20,000 here and 20,000 here, it's the whole package. So, preliminary budget, it's been approved as part of our curriculum budget. Now we're down to the granular level and saying, we need you to approve the 160s. So we have the money.
To follow up on that, so when it says on the remaining cost, where it's, the total is the 341.
Yep.
It says the bottom three lines, well, actually, a bunch of them say this. The textbook can only, we can only afford 11th grade due to budget cuts, we can only afford 11th grade due to budget cuts, we can only afford reading due to budget cuts, postpone till 2021 due to budget cuts. So all of those budget cuts, that, that's just referring to the fact that that, those dollars are not in the current budget.
Correct, in our current budget right now.
Right, and it would have been if we hadn't cut professional development and curriculum last year, last winter.
Yep.
So, all of this total amount was sort of intended to be in the budget for this year.
Yes.
But because we cut, we put all of that off.
So, now back, so that's where it relates back to this first page, so where I put in, if you, if we could get 550 back?
So that's my next question is, I mean, if we were as a board to discuss it and say, okay, well, maybe there's some room, let's put some of these things back in, is that going to overwhelm the system? Have plans been put into place such that, you know, you don't have time for that much professional development, for example, or teachers aren't ready to take on, you know what I mean, like, would that be a problem?
No, we would be good to go.
At this point, okay.
Yeah, we, it really, it really is, it really is us trying to figure out a way to help the board know what's inside of our money that we have, and is there something that we would have to come back to and say, we don't have this in the budget anywhere? Do you want to spend, for example, one time out of your fund balance? We're not in that discussion. We're in, if we, if we allocated the other money, the 550, we would have enough money to put back into place what we had originally planned before we decided on the cuts.
So, for, when you're looking at the 2022 remaining cost of implementation for the, for the language arts curriculum, that bottom part is professional development. So, it's 341, so, I mean, I'm trying to do the math right off the top of my head. I mean, that doesn't add up to the 550.
Nope. Because that's 550 in addition to what we still have in there. If that makes sense.
So, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, what else would be the curriculum on this page with the four, what other curriculum and professional development materials are needed? That's the whole thing.
That's the whole.
That's the materials, curriculum, and everything.
Yep.
Okay, okay. I thought that was all, I was thinking it was all professional development, but no.
Nope.
This is just ELA, basically.
Yep. It's basically our best guess at, if we got 550 back, it'd at least get us partway back to the trajectory we were on. And that's both, that includes both professional development and curriculum together.
And so then, would we be implementing like the textbook for all grades then?
As best as we could on a timing-wise, Rachel and Karen would have that cycle, yep, we'd be.
You'd still take your time.
Well, we'd be able to implement.
Whatever time you needed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Does that help?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And again, if, yeah, go ahead.
So, as it is right now, without, without getting the additional 550, where your, what the request is, and what we'll talk about Thursday, is 160,820 for 1920 school year, and then about 170,590 for 2021 and 2022 each year.
Roughly. That's based on what, if we, if we didn't adjust our curriculum and professional development budgets for this year, for next year, and the following year, we'd be able to allocate about 160, 170,000 a year to get it to pull off, because we'll, we need that other money to continue doing our other stuff, like developmental designs, responsive classroom, all of the programs we already have in place, we have to continue to set those, the dollars aside for those.
Is the 42 or 40, sorry, go ahead.
And, I'm sorry. So if, if it's 160,000 for 1920, 170 for 2021, 170 for 2022, what is in the budget for each of those years right now?
That would be what, that's our projected budget in there for the rest.
So that would be not going over anything that's already projected.
It's already in there. Yep, so again, back to the, what we do is look at our overall sandbox of budget of curriculum and professional development, which, when Kristen presents the preliminary budget, that's that giant number that sits in that document. And then, what we do as a team, as we go through, just like your household budget, and say, okay, if this is what we have.
Right.
How can we pull this off, and how long is it going to take us? And so, that's where we are here. We're saying it's going to be about $160,000 a year, but it will take us three years to implement at 160-ish, 170,000 a year.
And you're saying that we could allocate the 550, the full amount this year instead?
You could.
I mean, that's what this, that's what this is.
What you would, what, what we're saying there is, between, because we're already, it's hard to, because we're halfway through 1920, yes, I think you're.
For next year, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, between 1920 and 2021, we'd say, we'd allocate all the money for that program and have it done and in place, and probably be able to pull it off by the end of next year. We'd have some dangling things, but for the most part, we'd be, we'd be good to go.
Is the 42 or 44K, the writing curriculum for elementary, is any of that embedded in this 550, the cuts that we made?
So, here's, so here's where it plays back into that bigger sandbox. Because we'd have mon, we'd have extra money into the curriculum slash PD pot buckets, then it frees up dollars to allocate for other things. So I would say, yes, we can, if, where I would go with that is to say, because this has been part of the board conversation, is, one of the priorities, I know Liz, you brought it up, what can we do to finish, quote unquote, finish elementary curriculum? Knowing that, then what we would do is say, all right, we know that that's a board priority to also get the elementary pieces finished up. So, we'd go back to our budgeting inside of the big sandbox and say, okay, this now goes to the top as a priority. Before we, let's just, before we spend $20,000 on the next round of developmental designs, if that's what it is, elementary priority is the, is the next thing we're going to spend $42,000 on. That's how we budget when we know that, when we're given the direction.
Do you know offhand the dollar, is it, I know it's the writing, but do you know offhand what the other dangling needs are?
Rachel would have been a better idea than me.
For elementary?
Yes.
Yeah, so for elementary, again, if we wouldn't have had last year's budget cuts impacting this budget cycle, we would have finished writing for elementary, which means the core tier one would have been finished this year. But because of the cuts, we postponed grades three through five writing. That will happen next year. So in the next budget cycle, FY '21, we will complete, so July 1, we'll have the funds available for next year to start the three, five writing, and then that will be completed. Our next task would be then to dive into more of the multi-tiered systems of support that help other areas of learning within our tier one. And that is that 42-ish number? Nope, the, the 42, and then 20 for professional development, is to finish grades three through five writing.
Okay.
We already have that, that will happen.
Okay.
Yep, that's in the budget, that will happen beginning July. Not in this year's budget, but it's a priority for next year, so we will do it as soon as we hit July next summer.
Think of it in terms of the, what I was talking about with short-term versus long-term. When we, conceptually, when we run a curriculum cycle, we, the biggest chunk of the curriculum cycle with PD, planning, curriculum purchasing, writing, all that, is the, what we call a tier one, or for the majority of the kids. So that's the big package that comes to the school board and says, we, we're recommending implement whatever, underwater basket weaving, that's what we're recommending to do this, right? Then what happens that typically doesn't always reach, unless it reaches the cost threshold, what doesn't necessarily reach a continual board conversation is, with regard to multi-tiered systems of support, so you've got the gifted side, you're articulating up, and you've got the intervention side, you're articulating to the kids that need support. What we then do in the subsequent years, after the big one, is, we're working on, what are the supports that are needed? What are the smaller curriculum chunks? Because they just simply don't cost as much typically, but then go into place. So, what is a tier two reading intervention? And a great example of that is, a few years ago, our push was to, in reading, was to get all of, make sure that all of our special ed teachers were trained in Orton-Gillingham, right? So, that's an example of what I'm talking about, is, there are, there are some dangling appendages that happened that really just don't end up reaching the board's level, because they're just not big enough. But they are the things that, they're $20,000 here, they're $30,000 here, because most of it is training, and that happens. And it happens on that other end of the spectrum, too. What do we do for our gate kids? What do we do for our gifted kids? But they just, they're not the $500,000, $600,000 curriculum package. Does that help?
Yeah, I think it's important, too, when you look at that curriculum packages, Bob said, when you, whatever you're looking at, your curriculum should hit about 80% of your kids. It doesn't ever hit 100%. So about 80% of your students it should be successful with. Then the other 20%, those areas that Bob just mentioned, you have to look and usually find materials and strategies and things to help support. And so, the first year of implementation, your teachers are going, you know, first year, they're going through the training and learning, second year, they're in the classroom trying it, and after that second year where they're trying it with their kids, they know, well, we tried to get these extra materials that we thought would help our gifted students. Maybe we're meeting the mark, maybe we aren't. If we aren't, then they look into finding more materials that would meet their needs. So, that first year is just really getting a feel for what it is. As they go through the process, they're always looking about, how does this impact our EL learners? How does this support our gifted? How does it, but there's no curriculum that does it all well. If there was, we'd, you know, across the nation, you'd be buying that.
But it, what has become clear to us, and we have had multiple conversations, is with, with the board's interest in knowing what are those things, then it allows for these conversations to start happening, so that now we know moving forward that we really want to make sure that as we're presenting packages along the way when it comes to kindergarten, that we're also including, like, what, what's the trajectory of intervention then on this? What's the, and have that part of the presentation, so that you as a board understand what that is, and can understand what might be the residual costs that are going to be coming a year from now. And then, the question comes, is that, do you have that budgeted, or are you going to be coming for us for more money? Right? That's the big question. So, and that's why I keep saying, most of the time, I don't say all the time, we, if we don't have it budgeted, we will be very clear to say to you, this is not something we can afford in our budget, so you, we're going to have to have you figure it out. But other than that, we will always be coming to you with stuff that we've figured out how to keep inside of our budgeted dollars.
Thank you. Could I, I have another question for you. And thank you for all the work that you did, asking, answering all those questions. That was a ton of things, I know, and it was very, very helpful. For some reason, my 21 page is blank, I don't know what was on page 20, but it just says, oops, a trouble loading, so whatever was on 21, I didn't get to read.
That's your notes.
Yeah, but my, yes, the only other question that I think that I asked, in the Read Well by Third Grade that's on the website, it says, based on that's on the website, it says, based on school board recommendation, a review of tier two and three methodology and materials will take place. The goal is to ensure we're offering enough systematic explicit phonemic awareness and phonics instruction for those who need it. Budget cuts to curriculum and professional development will have an impact on the scope and timing of this review. What do we need for that to be carried through money-wise? That was the only thing that I.
Thank you. One question. Yes, so what we've planned to do is we need to finish elementary first, the writing, but alongside that, we'd like to work with you and show you what our multi-tiered systems of support look like throughout the district. So what is the intervention and classroom support that we're providing to students that fit within the Read Well plan? But we'd like to do that with you and explain where we're at and then talk about what specific needs we have ongoing. So two of those specifically are letters and Orton Gillingham at the elementary level. Those are pretty significant costs, but after we explain where we're at as a district with mapping out MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support and intervention, as Bob was saying, that's when we bring to you another request of, we'd like to add this to our, our framework and our system of support, this is how much it will cost. So we'd like to do that after we finish the K-12. So depending upon how this rolls out within the next month, we'd like to start that work with you because we don't want to postpone it.
So do you have any idea, like, I mean, is any of that currently in the budget and you know approximately how much additional it would cost? Or do we not have any at all in the budget and we'd be like starting from scratch?
We'd have some in the budget for Orton Gillingham training for interventionists. However, that training doesn't occur until March and June in Minnesota. So when we hire or bring in new interventionists, they go a year without that training. So we have to plan accordingly to that. The letters would be something that we would be building in new. So that is not part of the budget.
And we do have some staff that are already trained in Orton Gillingham, it's just not all classroom teachers, but interventionist, special education.
Yep.
And I think they're listed, they're listed in the.
You put all, everybody that's trained in Orton Gillingham in that document. This is great, that, yeah, yeah.
But we also, I'll explain Thursday that we can do two tiers of letters, which is a priority for us. And the first tier would be half the cost, and that would focus on K-two primary, early literacy skills. So that would be the first priority we would bring to you outside this K-12 package to just do the core right for everybody first. But then February, we'd like to start those conversations about.
Yeah, it seems to me kind of a big question structural wise, that the first step that you do is you get approval of like secondary literacy curriculum. And, and that's the curriculum itself, do you want it or don't you? But also incorporated in that is the cost in the professional development, all of that, that's the package. And the board will be asked, do you approve this or don't you approve that? Then it seems to me, what you're proposing today or talking about today is unfolding over several years. And each time, what you do is you break that down, and when you approve the budget, you break down that further. But, but the key decision is when you approve the curriculum package, that's when it's, it's very important, the total amount, as close as you can estimate the breakdown. Is that?
Yeah, that's close. And I think, one thing, and I'm watching the time because I want to keep us moving, so we, and because we're going to have a whole work session on secondary, on Thursday, right? But this will also come into play as we redo the curriculum cycle, how we do curriculum cycle and that. So.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
And one other related to this, because I think it's important, one of the things that you've talked about a lot is professional development. Is that something that takes place during the school year or the summer or both? Because I have two concerns on that. One is cost, and the other is how much missed class time we have.
That's the conundrum, right? Because if you take teachers out of the classroom, they're missing classroom time. But if you don't, and they come during the summer, then you're paying them. So we kind of try to have a combination of those. We, you know, one of the things we talk about all the time is trying to have our teachers in the classroom in front of kids. So that is a.
And, and I'm saying, but another concern is not just what it costs, obviously, that's, that's a big concern. But I'm also saying how much missed time accumulates during the school year because they aren't in front of kids directly.
And that's a significant concern for us particularly because a lot of these things now aren't one day professional, it's a three, four day stint together. But, okay, with that though, I'm going to move us along. So we're in the pathways programming, so number two on that sheet, right? What I wanted to share with you and what I handed out is, this will be coming to the board, so this is related to the pathways position, so those two positions. Current year, what we would like to do, because we have the funding to do it right now, and we've talked a little bit about this, is, so you're going to see this, this expenditure form come to you in, in the packet, is through community ed, there are dollars set aside for us to support career development in kids. We would like to plan on posting and hiring for the remainder of this year, so now back to that whole staging, kind of the pre-staging of these two positions, which would be having a full-time person, most likely a teacher on special assignment at this point, work second semester to try and pull all of the stuff together for pathways and start the next phase. And so that's what this is. So I just wanted to make sure, and the team wanted to make sure of, we're not just simply asking for two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars today. Again, we're kind of staging this out, saying, we've got a way to pay for this right now. And then this is also something that the partnership plan has shared, that they are interested in helping support as we move forward. And so there could be this whole, kind of, this could be something where the district is helping, the partnership plan is helping, community ed is helping, put these positions together. So this would be the start, which is why I say you're going to see this coming, and we're going to, I'll probably end up having this for sure on the consent agenda for the nineteenth, because we'd like to get this posted, because if it is a teacher on special assignment, it's going to impact our hiring for not only this position, but then backfilling someone into their classroom for second semester. Does that help?
Yes, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Which I appreciate, but I thought two hundred and fourteen thousand seemed like a lot to start. Because what's been presented to us so far, it seems like is so limited by our schedule that is this, will this actually be able to start making headway, or do we need to do those in tandem?
Yeah, so, yeah, here's where we are with, here's where we are with all of it. Because it's such a complicated mix, right? We can't just say we're going to adjust the schedule, because the schedule's one part of it. We can't just say we're going to adjust programming, because programming is a part of it. And so what we, back to, what do we really need? And where we're at is what we really need is a person that can be able to spend their time, eventually too, because.
Or you're going to start with.
We're going to start with one right now. So this kind of interim person right now, the focus is really to answer, I think, your question, Shelley, and all of our questions is, what might this truly look like? And at the same time, can continue doing what, they would probably take over what I've been doing, which is going on and meeting with the organizations that we're trying to make sure understand what we're doing and, and building more of those relationships. We've got a bunch of them in place, but that's what this person would be doing between now and the end of this school year into June, leading up to, we're probably, we're going to have to make a decision, are we going full bore with this thing? Because we probably are going to need to have someone, at a minimum, one person, if not two people, to build this out so that we can answer the questions that you're going to have as a board and have relationships and.
Right. Because I think.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. With that, with that comment, and it's something I think I've said many, many a time, and I'll, I just think it's appropriate here as well, the sustainability of the program is just, and I, I want to also, for a second, segue onto the bar as well, because I see that that's kind of a similar type of situation where we, we, we get this position and, you know, which, you know, you know, on face value here, I completely support, but it's the sustainability of the program. So long-term, not one to two-year, maybe not, I, I don't know how that is, but between that and also bar, you know, I, I look at Katie Papagatoa's spot, and I know that it, it starts out in one area, and then how much is that phased out? And, and should it be phased out? That's, and I just want to drive that, that I, sustainability of programming is so crucial to the longevity and success of the overall programming.
And that's why we're suggesting doing this in a staged way with regard to pathways, because I'm not sure we really want to be building this thing while we fly it, right? I think it behooves us to start small, let's put a person full-time for a semester, let's get the next set of answers going. Then let's look at, are we ready to say, yep, this is, now that we have our answers, this is where we're headed? Which then leads us into the last part of today's conversation, it kind of ties into the whole Levy and referendum, because that will be tied into that. So we want, that's what leads us to be able to be in a sustainable position, I would argue, is, is going slow to go fast, but we just need some people to do it.
Liz?
Oh, sorry, thank you. So do, you don't mean that the partnership plan would contribute to any of the fifty-three, five, you mean if there are additional things and maybe they would?
Yep. My understanding is the partnership plan is really interested in helping support the pathways move. But we don't know what that looks like yet. So in the meantime, let's take advan, what we're saying is let's take advantage of the dollars we have in community education to fund a position that fits, because there's dollars that are articulated for very specific things in community ed, one of them is career and college development. This fits. Let's use that now, doesn't come out of general fund. It doesn't put the partnership plan in a spot where they have to commit to anything at the moment, and let's, let's get this going up and running.
There's two big chunks for this. There's the, the curriculum component, working with guidance counselors, high schools, teachers on what that curriculum piece is. And then there's the other piece where Chris has people barking down our door about helping organizations come in as they're already starting to, to talk about careers and give our kids some experiences. But to go deeper with that, with internships, shadowing, all those kind of things, you need to have a person who's just working on that. The fortunate thing we have is Rick Robbins, our new executive director for partnership plan, is very excited and helping with this. The partnership plan in the past hasn't supported a position, but we did a presentation from them at the last meeting, and they really want to do whatever it takes to get it going. They're also had the conversation about having it long-term, not just a one-year commitment and doing kind of a three-year commitment. For them, it's a win-win, because they feel like if they can make the connections with the community and those partnerships, guess who's going to be at the partnership plan? I guess who's going to be helping with Da Vinci Fest, all the things that they feel are important, so they, they feel like it's a win-win. But they don't have, they don't have a December meeting, and their meeting isn't till January twenty-eighth. Well, for us timeline-wise, as Bob said, if it's a person from our staff right now, we'll not only need, we'll need to do the hiring process and then get somebody into that place. So that's kind of the, the tricky thing with partnership plan.
Bob, could you, because is this going to come to us Thursday or the following Thursday?
The nineteenth.
I was thinking we would, we would put it on the, we would be able to have this discussion today, and then if there's questions about it, we could probably get those answered between now, and then just put this on the consent, because I think that's where we're kind of headed with. We'll do whatever we want.
I think something else that would be helpful is to put on paper what a job description looks like.
We're working on that right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think.
Please.
I mean, I feel like it's really unclear to me what the direction of this, I know enough about what's been done so far, but I don't know, I feel like it's a little too early to hire a person, but, and I, and I think you started to say this earlier too, I, I feel like the, the bigger issue is the class schedule, you know, at the high school, and, and to be able to have some, so students have more opportunities to take electives and, and to, you know, have some more experiences actually in the high school, rather than saying, we're going to open up our doors and let you go shadow businesses. I mean, we have a lot of opportunities in our high school that kids can't take because they can't, they don't, they can't fit it into their schedule. So can we focus on that first?
I was just going to touch on, having worked really closely with the pathways team and seeing what they're doing, we're kind of at a standstill right now because there's not anyone who owns it and can keep things going. There's been a lot of conversations, these teachers have gone above and beyond, they are working themselves to the bone, trying to do all of this on top of their regular teaching schedule.
Yeah.
But there's conversations at the high school that have to happen just about, looking at the courses that are currently offered, is this the right thing? What else could we be doing differently? Should we be revamping different classes to have more of this focus like we want within pathways? So there's a lot of conversation just within our existing program. Obviously, there's more conversation about what we do if we have more time in the day and we can do all of those things, but there's a lot that can still be done within our current system, from what I'm hearing from those conversations. It's just having someone who owns it and can focus and have those conversations with the teachers and the guidance counselors and people at the school, as well as the business part, where, you know, we have the flex time speakers and they just showed up in force, and ever since then, since we put that call out, I am getting calls constantly from people, and it's just hard to put the business committee and say, well, we'll get to you, because they're really excited now. So we need someone who can help build those relationships, keep in contact with them, help them fit in where they can now, knowing that we're eventually going to build it out into something bigger too. So just having been on those conversations, it feels like they're feeling the need to have somebody to get that work started, knowing that there's a whole nother big piece that needs to happen as well.
Okay, I'll take Mark's next.
I, I would agree with that, that I think that this is something that the board and the community and that we all feel is important. I think to keep that momentum going forward, this is a relatively small investment to start. I think to be able to answer those, those inquiries and, and go out and get more inquiries is important. There are programs out there that, that utilize a pathway even within a six-period day. Certainly, we don't love to talk about other options, but I know Minnesota School District has their navigator program, which is, they, there's unique curriculum sets that are, that are, have been designed for these pathways that are still fit within their six-period day, but are, are really innovative approaches for curriculum. So I, to me, I think that if, if we are committed to this program, this is the way we begin. It's not, not, not the end, but it's how we keep the momentum moving and provide the board with feedback, what do we need to do?
I agree with everything you said, and I don't know if this is at all possible, but since you're doing the job description, would there be a way to combine both of those things, that this person could actually, you know, look at things in the community and say, oh, if we could do this? And that person could be looking at changing programming?
Yes, that's exactly what, so, so it's all connected, so it's all connected, again, I'm watching the time so we can make sure we get on to class size, because we already covered specialized. But if you would flip two pages, I'm going to try and answer all three of these at the same time. You'll see that Rob and, Rob and I worked with, Rob and, Rob worked with me to come up with a scheduling option piece, because I know the schedule comes up all the time. And so the, the answer to all of this is kind of a both and. And really, I think, as I'm, as I'm processing through this, if the board is going to continue to say that pathways is a trajectory, and I can continue to provide updates along the way, I've got to find a way to really strategize on how we keep all the components moving together, and one doesn't get way out in front of the other one, and one doesn't fall behind. And that's where this piece is, and in doing so, finding ways to do that creatively, that we're not spending extra dollars that we don't have. And so that's how I would explain, I would say, I need the group to have this position right now, we've got a creative way to fund it so that we can keep this part moving forward with that team. In addition, we've started looking at scheduling options if we want to say, in addition to our current curriculum set inside of a six by two, here is what the other options are right now and what it might cost in dollars. And so I'll walk you through this quickly, and then again, that's this sheet here, which I think probably is going to be something that we'll be revisiting multiple times now moving forward. So if you, if you look at the first or the second column where it says six by two, so that's our current schedule. So that means that we have six periods in a day, teachers teach five out of six, and we have two semesters. So whenever you, that second number is semesters, trimesters, or block. So if you then follow that column down, class periods is six, grading periods is two, grading period is a semester, trimester, et cetera. What then says, the way we calculate cost is based on percentage of time that is taught. So in a six by two, periods taught being five, we have an eighty-three percent efficiency rating, meaning a teacher teaches five out of six. There are then, the rest of it are just numbers for you to understand the, how, what's the math behind how we arrive at the costing? The best way we can do it is to say, here's the number of course requests we have, here's the number of sections, here's the FTE required to cover all of those sections. So it currently takes a hundred and one point six FTEs to cover our current. So it currently takes 101.6 FTEs to cover our current high school schedule, six by two, with those classes, those sections, which costs us about $10.9 million a year to staff that building, just in regular education. So if you use that as the base, then, you can work your way to the right and, and look at the different columns. So if we simply said, let's do trimesters instead of semesters. So now you're doing three courses in a given year horizontally, so visually horizontally, but it's still six periods a day. It changes the amount of courses we can offer because we're changing the horizontal spread, not the vertical spread. The vertical spread's what costs you dollars, in this case. You can see that it doesn't cost us any more money. However, in the notes below, and we don't need to go through all the notes below, you can read through those, what ends up happening is you run into specific little nuances, like the AP teachers hate trimesters. Right? Because now what's happening is a course that in a two semester set goes all year long, now you've got a course that ends a little bit shy, or can only be offered in first trimester, second trimester. It can't be offered second trimester, third trimester, because you don't get through all the materials. So you end up with these little nuances, which we've tried to explain in the notes below with regard to different things. So what I'll need for, from you as a group is, when you read the notes, if something doesn't make sense, we want to be sure we figure out a way to craft that so that this document becomes a usable document as we further have conversations.
Yeah, what I'm also concerned about though too, is the availability for kids to take those additional courses. I mean, you can add a lot of the courses, but I can't find room in my schedule.
Yep, so here's what comes next. So, well, before I go forward.
Sorry, I was just going to ask, so that's if, if kids are doing music and language, that's still, they would still be doing music and language all year, so?
So that's where we have to figure out little nuances, is like, a six, so trimesters were tried, I think back in 2001, 2002, that era, they were soon jettisoned. Because it's, it just is a very, it doesn't work really well for what we're trying to pull off with stuff like, this is where we get back to, we know we're not going to do something to impact our music program. Well, when we have those parameters in Stillwater that other districts might not have that that gets, that says, yep, trimesters are probably out unless we're willing to do something different, which then is going to add a cost to it. So, yes, five by three is five periods a day. Really, the only thing you gain in a five by three is longer class periods. Because now you only have class period five in a day, rather than six in a day. So your, each class period is a little bit longer. So rather than 49 minutes a period, you might be at 54 minutes a period. And it ends up costing you more money because what you'll see happens is you lose efficiency with that. So your efficiency drops. And so again, a way for us to keep common how we're calculating things, that's where the efficiency factor comes in, is because you only have five periods. And, and the way that you make that look is, six times three is 18 options for kids, five times three is only 15 options for kids. So to your question now, Mike, is where it all kind of gets jumbled, now kids in a five by three theoretically have three less opportunities in their schedule to do something different.
But they have three more than they currently have, because it's six by two.
Yep, so they would have more. They'd have 15 versus 12.
Right.
But less than six by three. And you still haven't mitigated the trimester issue.
Right, and, and currently, if you're taking an AP class, is that an all-year class or is that half a year?
Yep, it's all year.
All year. So now, you, I mean?
So here's where other, here's where I say there's nuances, and I put this in the notes. If we were going to move from semesters to trimesters, now you're impacting pretty much every class, which means we're going to have to provide professional development and curriculum writing time for a teacher to take a year-long class and condense it down into a two-trimester class and stuff. So there will be residual costs above and beyond what the staffing cost is for us to get ramped up. If you remember when we did the large transition, we set aside a million dollars, and that was just to move 200 and some odd staff, just to, for all those little nuanced type things. So I'll continue through.
Two columns.
Two columns. So the last two columns, four by four, so this is the block. When people talk about block scheduling, this is the block. So it runs two different ways. You either have four periods on one day, and the last four periods on the other. So it essentially is still eight periods, right? So you're gaining eight. So a kid goes, yep, an AB day, one, two, three, four on A, five, six, seven, eight on B. So they get eight periods over two days. The difference being they're 90-minute blocks, give or take. And so, this is where it starts to mitigate, because when you look at, it's going where we're going to combine the last column. When you start going seven and eight periods, what we have to navigate is, our kids have told us they're stressed and overwhelmed. So do we really want to add, so I'm going to jump, I'm going to jump to the seven by two. If you simply went seven by two, great, you're getting 14 opportunities, but now a kid has seven classes every day rather than six, and our kids have been telling us they're stressed out. So do we really want to add another period in a day? Back to the four by four. This at least gives a kid a break where they don't have eight periods in one day, they only have four classes in one day. But they gain 16 opportunities. The other option to do with a block schedule is like Alexandria does, where they run it a four-block by semester. Right? So you have four periods a day, but you only take every class is only, so it's like a college. So think of college. College is truly a, it's 16 credits, four classes as the, as the block. That's what a college kid does. They go four periods a day for a semester, then they switch. They go four periods a day, then they switch. What we do with our things like band, world language pieces like that, that really benefit from having the whole year, is you schedule in what are called skinnies in that model. So you might go block one, and then after block one, there's a 90-minute block that's actually two 45-minute classes. Those classes meet every day all year long in that block. So that, again, that might be band, orchestra, choir, doesn't fit a block, it actually goes 45 minutes. And then after that little mini-block is done, you go into your second block, and then your third block, and your fourth block. So there's ways to navigate the band pieces in the block schedule. What you'll see in there is kind of what I've, I'm hoping this now makes sense of what I've been talking about. A block schedule is going to run you about a million point two more a year to run.
Oddity, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you're taking foreign language?
Yep.
Or if you're taking something like geometry or algebra or whatever, you get some oddities there because you, before they end up, it's not like you, you might take algebra, pause, following year, take geometry, et cetera.
So here's, here's where, it probably won't be this person's job to figure out, but now here's where this relates back to the previous conversation. If what, as a board and group, we say, you know what, we, let's just pick on the block. We got to figure out how we're going to come up with a million two, because it's important enough to us to do this. If that's what we were to say, we would then start a subgroup going, okay, what do we want? What are the options for us with those givens, Mike? Like, we know, because, for example, I can't remember which district does it, they've done that with math. Math is the, is the subject they've pulled out as minis. So their skinnies are in the math. So math runs every day 45 minutes, regardless of what kids choose in their other blocks. Now, teachers will teach three out of four every day. The nice thing about that for a teacher is now that's, that's
Big chunk.
A big chunk of time that they have to do teaming and things like that, or?
And on that note, just real quickly, that's what the bar coordinators have said. Most schools who have the bar program
Yeah.
Have a block schedule, so they have a big chunk of time to work on that.
Yeah, and I've worked in both, and there is no doubt, the block schedule is a sweet setup for a variety of reasons, but it costs money.
Does the, is the 1.2 million, does that mean a block schedule would cost that much every year additional?
Yeah, these are, these are the annual cost differences between what we have now. So if, yeah, so if you'll see, the second from the bottom row is the additional staffing cost. So if the base is 10.9, you'll see that block is?
It's just the number of teachers times.
It's, yeah, it just takes you that much more FTE to pull off what you're trying to pull off.
It, it seems to me there, there are really two questions here. One is, if you want kids to have more options, that's one question. And which of these works best to get that? The second question is, it's going to cost, cost you, so you got to figure out how you're going to go get the funds.
Yep, yep, so.
Before you do that, I think one other question, and it goes to what Mark and others said earlier, that additional person, there are all kinds of activities you can do with or without a change schedule
Correct.
That are legitimate for Pathways.
That might lead us to?
Or, or you may never get there. But this is the ideal of if you want a sophisticated program that actually delivers more.
Yep, and so could, could the, this person, as you're moving forward through time, develop for all of us to consider the pros and cons of block schedule versus our current schedule? What are some different options and what are the costs of?
What I would envision along those lines is, this is where having a person that isn't tied to a classroom benefits us, right? Because that person could spend a day with Alexandria with these specific questions and go, okay, what's working, what's not working? What are the pitfalls? What, and really, and they could go to Burnsville and find out?
And we built the community too.
And they can do that.
Our community is unique. I think one of the things I know about Alexandria is that it started with really building this strong relationship with some of these core businesses, and they talked about what they wanted, you know, from our graduates. And our, you know, that's one community, we're a different community, you know, we need to do the same thing, I think.
Yeah.
So I like the idea of having a person who's kind of the point person. I have wanted to see a volunteer coordinator for the district for a long time, for the same idea with parents, you know, to, you know, anytime that a teacher needs some extra set of hands in the, in the classroom, or there's a project or something, to have a person that, can you please go find someone who can do this? And then if I'm a person who has three hours on Wednesday afternoons, I know who to call. You know, I, I think the idea of having a point person who is the connector from both sides makes a lot of sense. I, I just, I, I guess I hear you, Chris, as saying, you know, we are ready to move into that place, and I, and I agree with you, Mark, I don't want to slow us down. But I'm really concerned that we make sure we have all the pieces moving together, that we don't create a whole lot of new opportunities that, that we're sort of structurally not ready for, you know? But I, I do know that a lot of community members are really, really interested in coming in and trying to provide additional support in our schools, and I think that's great. I, I think we should have this as, as an actual report, and then an action item instead of on consent, for the very reason that it's something new and innovative, and we want to continue to take our opportunities to share the story of what we're trying to do. At least that's just my thought is, you know, it would be?
So we have to add it tomorrow to Thursdays?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what other people think, but I just feel like if we do it on consent, I don't know.
I, I think you're right in terms of even giving the community a peek at what could be the plants and seeds.
I just kind of explained it a little bit.
But the other thing, I think, and again, that's to be argued later on, I think the role of these different schedules and how it affects the curriculum, that's a huge principles issue. And, and that's who your real expect, expert is. I don't think you're going to be able to take a, a teacher and say, okay, we're going to develop all of that, maybe.
And I'm going to keep us moving, so remember, this is what we're, we're connecting in here, so I'm going to keep us moving. What I, maybe something to chew on is for the 19th, maybe we do, like we've done with a couple of other things, we put it on as an action item and just do a report in action in the same piece for, for this, so that you get, you kind of handle that. Maybe that's a compromise, let us know. I'm going to move us into class size, because that's the last part of how this whole piece fits together so that we can then get to the last half of the meeting, which is kind of the, what's the direction with referendum? So hopefully what you're seeing is how all of this is, we need you to understand all of this collectively, so that it helps you understand why we need some direction with what you're thinking with regard to levy, bond, et cetera, et cetera, because it relates. So Kathy put together for you the, the answers to the request of, what might it look like if we started to attack some of our elementary class sizes? And so what you have in front of you is the sheet that works through different scenarios. Scenario one stands on its own. Then you'll see down the left-hand side, scenario two, which impacts second and third grade on its own. Then you'll see scenario three, which impacts four and five on its own. And then you'll see scenario four, which is the combination of one, two, and three. Finally, you'll see a scenario five. And the reason we have scenario five in there is we went through, took all of our comparison districts, and tried to figure out where to, where do we sit as far as an average class size? And Kathy put together a costing for, if what our goal was in scenario five, was to be at the middle of where our comparison districts are with regard to class sizes, gave?
Bless you.
Bless you.
There it is. If we did?
Yes, it is.
Another one. So I just wanted to give you the overview, and then I'll let Kathy?
Over here.
I'll let Kathy explain the details if we go back up to the top, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood the totality of the sheet.
So just to give you a little, if you go down to the bottom, you'll see the assumptions. Here, the way we got to the numbers is, I took the enrollment of the kids for the current school year, rolled them forward a grade for next year, and then whatever K was this year, I used K again. So it was just a way to get us a base number of, of enrollment that's as close as we can get. So what, what we had done is Bob had gathered some numbers from other districts around us and where the enrollments were, and we kind of picked these ranges that kind of fit into where other ones were. So what you'll see, K and one, what I did is I reduced the top of the range, so we have that, we have the ratio, and then the range that was around that. So I reduced the top of the range to 24. I increased, I changed the bottom of the range to 18, which doesn't have a huge impact, but it does when you decide if you're going to add sections or not. And we are able to, to change that range, all of our class sizes, because of where everything falls, there would not be a cost because there's no change as a result of that. We are, we are in there already.
The current top range number is 25.42. So you'd be reducing from 25.42 down to 24. So what that means is?
With zero impact, zero dollar?
If all things stay the same for next year?
Based on the assumptions that we use.
Based on our assumptions.
Enrollment, yep. So grades two and three, we reduced the top of the range, which is right now 29.42, was reduced to 27. Bottom of the range reduced to 20, or to 19. That had an impact of 3.4 FTE or $363,800 cost. Four or five, which is an area that came out in the survey, the community survey that we did, was four or five was an area there that was a concern. That one we reduced to 29, it's currently 32.42. That would reduce the top of that range to 29. Bottom, the ranges were, it just depended on where things were because we already had a smaller range at, at that level. So it looks a little odd, but the bottom of the range was changed to 27. That also equated to 3.4 FTE or just under $400,000.
Kathy, what was the range, sorry, it was a range, sorry, what was the bottom range again for grade two, three, and then the bottom four, four or five, what were the currently?
The bottom for twenty, two, three is 21.42, and grades four or five is 26.42.
Okay, thanks.
So you're saying for four and five, the bottom would be going up?
Because what I did is, I tried, I believe what I did is I went three from the top down, and when you're already three below, that changes your range, and I rounded it up to the nearest number.
So?
So I rounded it to 27.
We also tried to get to the decimals.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's just confusing.
I appreciate the work that went into this, but also, question I have, we did this in the past, and we did comparables, and the comparables five, 10 years ago, maybe not quite that long, always showed, we compared pretty well elementary-wise, but not so well secondary-wise. Is that still the case? Because this is strictly elementary.
No.
We're high in elementary.
Yeah, across, for our comparables right now, we sit, of the 10 comparables, we mostly sit in slots seven, eight, nine. We don't sit any, sit any higher than seventh of the 10. We're at the bottom. We come in ninth, and, and the reason, so here's the caveat to that. We come in ninth, and, and the reason, so here's the caveat to that. Places like Mounds View, they purposely run their classes a little bit higher, is what I shared. And some districts don't give you specifics. They give you the range. And so they're, they try to sit between 20, for example, 29 to 32, but what I was told is they, they push theirs up into the 32, because they haven't seen a significant change in the performance of their kids by doing that. I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't, that's just what I was told.
Before you go on, can you just talk a little bit about when the board has made adjustments before, we've always like decreased by one, or we haven't done anything with the range. So talk about where the, that's the scenario that we're getting now. Does that make sense? Like usually, usually it's just the midpoint that we would decrease, right? And that would shift the whole range. But is this just shrinking the range around what we've already approved?
So the top?
It's the midpoint, the midpoint.
Yep. So the ratio, which is how we staff, that's what gets us that initial staffing. Once we get staffed in our buildings, we really don't go back to the ratio ever, because that was just for that initial number. What becomes most concerning to people is that number on the top end of the range, because that's where, for example, the latest, as you're all aware of, is we're navigating the Rutherford piece with the higher kindergarten there. So what Kathy and Chris and I look at is, when does it make sense to add another FTE, where you don't end up with two super-duper small classes, but you're not going too far outside of the upper range, so that you don't have a class that's just uncon, it's just too big? So that's why when we do this, it really, in our estimation, makes more sense to address the upper range, because that's the decision number, right? That's, that's the number that says, we're okay with classes getting to 29, but if they, if three sections are at 20, if three sections go 30, 30, 30, you're adding a fourth section. That's really what the conversation is.
Well.
Does that help?
My, my question is kind of related. What is the impact of having the bottom number be either closer or further away? Because if you have a classroom, let's say you have 30, 30, let's say it's kindergarten, you have, you have 20, 24, 24, and 16.
Yep.
What do you, what do you, you know, would you have to make one?
Well.
I don't know, like, what's the financial impact of having the bottom number where it is?
So what, where it plays out is, so in that's, in that situation, 24, 24, 16 typically.
I guess you would just move.
You would, but here's where it does play. Here's where it does play. So for example, and we'll go back to Rutherford, it's a perfect example of, when we're looking at the numbers across, the numbers of, of kids across the numbers of section, if those three sections, as an average, drop below that low range, that's where it becomes a, well, from a finance decision, it's a $107,000 decision. Do you want to keep three sections, or is it more fiscally responsible, and are you not going to go over your upper range and leave a little bit of wiggle room in case kids come in, to drop from three sections to two sections, and then use those dollars more efficiently? That's where it impacts.
Yeah. Now, building a little bit on what you said earlier about Mounds View, it might be interesting to talk to somebody like Melinda, declassify, make a difference on results.
Well, and here's what we're finding. I, the, the results piece is one piece of it. I think if we brought our teachers in here, what I'm hearing from teachers, it really has less to do with the achievement of the kids from their perspective, but it's a change in the demographics that we're seeing in our classrooms, right? It's a, they're, they really come to us with the concerns of, it wasn't a big deal to have 30 kids in my classroom, from a classroom management, different than now, if I have three kids that are really high-needs kids from a behavioral standpoint, now 30 kids in the classroom does make a difference. I think that's where you find it.
Well, and see, but, but in a way, that does get at the achievement as well. It depends on who the 30 kids are.
Yep.
And I would like, if we're maybe segueing into what we're talking about for a referendum, and raising money to address what's happening in our classes. I think part of this is, how do we address that issue? The issue of the distractions in, in the classroom? Whether you have a class size of 24, or 26, or 22, it comes down to, if I need support in my classroom, do I have the resources to get it?
So that gets to one of the questions that Tina said, right? She's got a question at the bottom of her sheet, and, and I don't, well, let me hold that thought. Do you have enough discussion here before we move into the last part, which is really kind of, the idea was to pull all of this together, and the only other piece that I have.
Can I go, can I go to Sarah's one more thing about where the bottom of the range, what does it matter?
Sure.
It matters because you're, the midpoint between the two is your staffing ratio.
Right.
And so if you were, if it's, if you say, well, it's arbitrary, and let's say it goes from 15 to 12, you've just dropped your staffing ratio, meaning we're going to have far more staff at the beginning of the year than maybe we would have.
Okay.
If you keep it within kind of five, when we take the middle.
So it's better, it's better for both of you to have a narrower space between those two numbers?
I, I'm saying it's, just don't view it as arbitrary. Because like, what does the bottom matter? It matters when we set out the initial staffing that's going to the buildings.
Okay.
Where the, where the bottom really matters for me is, if I'm at, if I have a section that's at a point 2.6 over the top of the range, I have, if we're looking at all of that, and we're deciding, do we need to add a section or not, I'm going to go divide it out and say, where does those sections land? And now if I land four below the bottom of the range, then we're going to say, yeah, that's probably not what we're going to do. We'd rather be a little bit over the top than four below the bottom.
Okay.
So that's where it comes in. And where you set that, kind of hits that threshold, okay, am I three below the bottom or a four below the bottom?
Right.
Is where that number has an impact.
Right. Right. That makes sense.
Just a quick question on your scenario four. So grades four and five, the range, that is only three kids, is that, that's what, because the next one is eight kids. So do you want to keep your ranges right? Am I reading that right?
Well, what, because you're, the reason that the four and five looks odd, because I shared this with Bob when we were walking through, you already only, you have four on each side for the K through three, and on four and five, you already only have three. So it's really.
But doesn't this just make it three total? Like bottom of the range is 27, top of the range is 29.
Yeah, I was looking at the old, the, the ratio is 26.42. If I go down, the ratio's 29.42. If I go down three, it's 26.42, rounded up to 27. So we went to full numbers, that's how I got to 27.
And what I would, what I would say to this, because we can, we can always have discussions about the totality of the range, the important takeaway from this document is the top end of the range, and what additional funds would it take to reduce those top ends? Because, because that's what's going to cost dollars in the end, is the reduction of that top end. Because that's where you're adding a class. But to your point, Shelley, we can, we can absolutely continue to have conversations of what do we want that to look like? That's our.
Well, and looking at scenario five, it looks like the range is five in all three cases.
Yeah.
And, and that's the average of comparison districts. And if we were going to do that, we would need additional, a little bit over 11 FTE increase, and then that would cost about 1.2 million dollars.
Yep.
Here's an important piece I don't want to get missed, though. At the bottom, you'll see there's two lines that say important considerations. The first one is, we have to have, in addition to this cost, you have to have at least an FTE of contingency in there, because, and we talked about this with specialist discussion at negotiations, there, you have, as you allocate staffing by buildings to calculate out those specialist FTEs, it's different when you actually take the total section. So I need the, when you add things together, it equals out to more FTE. I'm sorry.
Well, you're good.
So let me just give you an example. If I staff, sorry, I'm just doing it to screen.
Sorry, I just have to keep it moving.
It's Bob's fault. It's Bob's fault. If, so as I build the allocation model by building, it then ties into another spreadsheet that says, if you have this many sections of, of kids, you need this much art, this much media, this much FIDE. When I allocate that by building, I'm just going to give you the scenario. I have Lily Lake, I'm making up numbers. Lily Lake has 20 sections, that equals a point four. Brookview has 21 sections, that equals a point four. Together, it equals a point eight. When you actually look at how many sections total, it's 41, which actually equates to a point nine FTE. So for every combination of buildings, that you need to be able to have that extra FTE to say, I really need a point nine, not a point eight, because this model is taking it by building.
Really quick, easy one. Is there any reason you didn't, we ran a 26.42 on the scenario three, four, and five? Why didn't you just round it to 26 as opposed to 27? Round it down? Just asking.
Everything, I rounded everything up.
You just rounded it up?
Yep.
Okay.
So hopefully this is a start with the class size reduction. Here's the only thing that isn't figured in here, and Mike has brought this up, so you'll want to have, decided if you want to have conversations about it. This is how we attack class size across the board in a, in what, I guess the best word is, in an equitable way, across everything. It does not take into account space. So remember, in a, it's one thing to say you can add a section, but you got to have space to add it, that's another caveat. That leads into the last two documents I've handed out, which also connects with Mark's questions. Do you have another thing you want to?
Just let me finish my second point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because it's important.
Sorry.
We're pressed with time.
I know, I'm sorry, but I don't want you to say, well, you did tell us that piece, because it's a pretty big piece. The second important consideration is, you'll see that there's an additional four FTE for contingency in there, and the reason for that is, when you're looking at those ranges and you're set, just making that decision, are you adding a section? If more kids come, you need to have the FTE to be able to add that section if you need to. So that for contingency is for us to be able to have those FTE there, that we address the issues that come up as we get additional kids.
How is that different than what you currently have to have a contingency, don't you?
We don't have a contingency built in right now. We're coming back each time to say, we have more kids, we need to add a section.
Was that we did when we first started?
Yeah, yeah.
See, in a way, when you call it a contingency, is that what Mark and I are talking about? Because you always run into, and, and that's why I'm saying, numbers are one way to look at this, another is in terms of the composition of the kids.
And here's what I would, here's how I would answer that. The reason we don't have a contingency right now, or it's gone away, is it's taking us all of our FTE, including the contingency, to staff the way we're staffed. Like, we don't.
You don't have any.
We don't have, there isn't money built in for us to have a contingency anymore. We're, we're staffing with everything we got, K-12. That's, that's why there isn't a contingency. We've had to use it up on the front end each year, a little bit more, to the point where now, that's gone because we're staffed so tightly.
And that plays into the current Rutherford issue, for example?
That's why we have, that's why when we come back to you now, we're saying, we need to add a position, it's not in our staffing model. We don't have a contingency. Whereas before, we would have three or four, or I would say, two to four at each level FTE, where if there's a high section in, at the secondary, we'd say, okay, let's use some, some of that FTE that we've got in the budget. It's a money thing, is what it is.
Which is not a separate line item, it's the, what did we have for staffing the prior year, and have we spent all of, all of that again? And now we're spending plus some.
Yep. So for example, that 101.6 that we used on the staffing side, we might, in the past, we might go, all right, we're going to, we're staffing at 103, that's our total FTE, we're going to give Rob 101.6, and we're going to hold the rest and wait and see how that plays out.
Yeah.
We don't have the flexibility to do that anymore, we need all 101.6.
But shouldn't it balance out in a way? Because my point is that if you're getting more kids, you're also getting more funding.
Well, here's another, so it was going to get us totally off track, but here's where it's overcomplicated, and you need someone like Tom Meltzer in here, right? Because what he would say is.
Yes.
On the surface, it looks like that, but then we've got cross-subsidy that we're already taking out of the general fund. And we've got other things that are becoming more, more expensive every year. So a kid into the system doesn't just simply give us dollars, that might be paying for something that we already are planning on spending.
But if you got 30 more.
But they won't be in one class.
But they won't be in one class.
Spread across.
So overly complicated.
One class would be helpful.
But I think the bottom line is, you said, Mark, earlier about the resources that teachers need, and, and do, do they have what they need to be able to respond to the needs of the students in their classroom? So time, I would say, is probably one of the most precious resources they have. And when we add more and more students into their classroom, they have less and less time to devote to each one of those kids. So to me, that's important. And then it's another thing that, we have parents looking at class sizes and saying, that's too big, I'm not comfortable with that, I'm going elsewhere where I know I can have smaller class sizes for my child, then that's $14,000 out the door for every single child that leaves, right? Because that's local levy, that's state funding, that's all of it. And so we lose five kids, and that's almost one FTE.
Not 14, nowhere near 14.
12, or whatever it is.
Or 10, or elementary kid is not even 10. So just so we don't get that wrong.
So to that question, though, so, so you've got the class size thing, we're, keep us moving. To that question, that's why, back to this front page, and notice I didn't have it in our, in our four, but that's what, and to Tina's question, that's why down here, line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, social, emotional, SCL, multi-tiered systems of support and intervention, that, I would agree with you. That's where this comes into play across the whole system, is if we had the money, we would be saying, let's put more money in our support, both social, emotional, and intervention support, which crosses those lines of helping teachers with needs when they have them. That's what, that's what this piece is about here.
And part of that's important, because, as Mark talked about earlier, when we segue, if you're trying to sell additional money sources, that's part of what you've got to use as your rationale.
Now, I'm sharing this last piece, not as something to take us totally off track, but because it was asked, and I don't have another opportunity to get it in front of you. It, so here's Brookview. And one of the questions that's come up is, how do we, do we have a good idea of what Brookview sits right now, and what would it look like if we, if we added on to the Brookview piece? So there are two documents. One is the document that has the six bullet items under the title, and one that doesn't. And what I have highlighted, Mark Drummerhausen helped me with this one, is you will see the bullets explain to you what moves have been made to be able to pull off the programming that we have in, in Brookview now. So things like, Mark's created a second grade classroom in the art room. You'll see that that's one of the highlighted yellow areas. We moved the art room to the media center, preschool to a green room, green room to the sensory room, combined to space, orchestra to the main office, band into the intervention room. So this first document is just hopefully helpful for you to see what changes have taken place. And then the other thing that we asked Mark to do is, can you give us what it looks like if there were six classrooms? And the reason it's six and not eight is because at eight classrooms, that enters into a whole nother set of, how do we want to do these, do this questions with kids because of the way the space is? For example, if they want to, if you add eight classrooms, you, in order to keep the grade levels together, you now have to put fourth and fifth grade into what is currently kindergarten, first grade. Now your kindergarten, first grade don't have bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera. So we left it at the six to do it that way. So I just wanted you to have this piece of information.
Can I?
As you're coming up.
Orchestra is in the main office conference room, so I don't.
That's where they're holding that. Yep, that's the.
So where the instruments are and all of the playing is currently held in a conference room?
That, in that 101.
Okay. And then, and then green room and the sensory room, creating combined space, so.
Yep, 124.
So those are.
So I.
Wow.
So what you're, what you're speaking out loud is just kind of why we wanted to make sure you had this, so you knew where we were with that visually.
Oh.
So throwing a ton of information, I realize that, but hopefully what you're able to to see is it's all connected. I mean, it's all, it, there isn't just a single item, which leads us to the last, we've got 25 minutes left, which really leads us to the last question administratively. We're to the spot where, what we need from you as the board, is your thoughts and some direction on what we should be planning for with, when you take into account the report from Morris Leatherman, the idea of a levy, the community design team, the idea for a bond. What does the board, what we really need to answer is, what's the direction of the board, A, going out for something? B, what does that look like, and what's the timing on it? And the reason that that's important is, if you were to say to us, right now, our thoughts are, and I'm just throwing this out here, 2021 is when we wanna go out for X, Y, and/or Z. That helps us start figuring out what communications need to go out, and right now, it seems like it's a long ways away, but it's not. You know, anybody will tell you that you start planning for your next bond and/or referendum, the day after your last bond or referendum.
And we've already shared that with you, you've seen a breakdown already of the things that need to happen that year before. And so, you know, what that all looks like, we need to start doing some of the planning now, whether it's 20 or 21.
Can I just, I'm sorry, one more Brookview question, intervention in commons area, and I'm not seeing where that is.
Yes. That is on the, in the middle, right here, on this page.
Reading and instructional.
It's right between rooms 503 and 204, 205. On the bottom left of that, I have it highlighted in yellow. It says, Reading Core, Reading Core Instructional Code.
I see that, so that's what you mean by commons area?
Yep, that's a common, so 500 is a commons area.
Is that an open space?
Yes.
So, there's intervention occurring in an open space?
Yep. And if you wanna see specifically, I know Mark's gone down, I know Mike's been there. If you wanna go down with this, Mark Drummerhausen will be able to show you exactly what these spaces look like.
But it looks like that wouldn't change. It looks like that wouldn't change with the new addition.
Yep, it would, it would go up to 211, it'd go back to 211, which is on this page.
If Reading Core, the arrow indicates that it's going to say 510.
510, yeah.
It's going into 510.
Oh, 510, sorry.
But then, it does say intervention is in 211 as well, which probably is fine. It's like on both maps, we have.
Both maps, it shows 510.
And we do have open.
Right, what I highlighted, though, the reason I highlighted, okay, so back to the question.
Long-term learning.
The reason I highlighted it is, this is what Mark is sharing, is that they're doing intervention in this space. It doesn't mean that they're not housed out of 510. They're, they're taking up this space.
Okay.
To actually meet with the kids. So, again, to all of that, we're just to a spot administratively where we, we really need to start getting some direction on the bond levy piece from, from you as a board. And so, that's why we wanted to leave the last part of the meeting. It's supposed to be 45 minutes, we're down to about 20.
20 is generous.
So.
Do you wanna talk about, you know, last time we kind of talked about, are we good with 2021? Do you wanna talk about that, or are there people who think, like, we really need to look at 2020, go to that first, and then go to what we have in place?
Well, and the drawback with 2020 is the national and state elections.
Right. Which, to me, feels like it would be daunting. I think the only challenge with 2021 is that's it, right? That's our drop dead, like, if you have to get it. And I think we talked about, we could do a renew, we could do a three-question, a renew, and then an increase, and then the bond. And we've heard before that sometimes three questions is not good for our district, is that what's best? I don't know.
Having experienced one of those, where we carried one out of three, it's tough. And then, one, of course, we had multi-questions, we carried none of them, so, both of those. And both of those, first one happened 2008, where they passed one out of three. The latter election was when Cory was here, and we tried to pass with three, didn't go.
I feel like, wasn't that three different levels of operating levy, like, choices? Wasn't that one, two, and three that kind of built on each other in terms of operating funds?
That was a 2011 election, that's when it failed. There were multiple questions, and I know there was no building component. The safety piece of it was added to the, at least included as one question into the 13 bond, which helped it pass, which was our front entrances.
Right.
I don't know if that was a separate question in 11.
I think one of them passed, and not the, not all three.
Nothing passed in 11.
Okay, I'm thinking of one where there were three questions.
That's 2008.
Okay, that was the first one, okay.
That was 2008. That was a long time ago.
So, I think the important thing to remember is what Peter Leatherman was telling us, is regardless of when you go, the important piece is that you're able to make a significant argument for the need, and for what you're gonna be able to build upon, based on what the community has told us in the survey.
So, if we were gonna go for 2020, is that enough time to get? To have a plan, to know what we're doing with career pathways, enough so that we could say, this is what we wanna sell to the public? Is it even enough time to put that together?
That's my concern. I think the concern is to get clear messaging that, that everyone can be behind in that period of time. That's what I'm concerned about.
It was a 2007 vote, it was all gen ed dollars to increase by, to 927 per pupil, then it was add an additional 290 per pupil, then it was add an additional 94 per pupil, and that's, was the three-question in 2007.
And one of those passed? The one level passed?
That was a 53.21% response, yes, for the 927, and nothing for the adds beyond that.
Okay. Shelley, to your, oh, I'm sorry, Shelley, to your question about time, if you remember what Peter had said, is with the March primary for presidential, and then all of our representatives being up in August, you'd pretty much have to be getting your message out January to March. And we, we won't have our, you know, you won't have your community design team recommendation yet, you, that's kind of why we need this interim person to keep the pathways, we're going to figure out what that exact act, ask would be. So, I think from our perspective, 2020, not only because of the challenges that you have that Peter outlined, but just being able to prep for a number of big things. The positive side, although I understand, you know, a little bit scary, but when he shared with you about waiting until 2021, the districts that are doing the renew as the first question, is in the high 80s about people renewing those, so that's good news. If you really have a compelling message about what you want the extras for, which our community has said, unique, you know, further programming with career and pathways, class sizes, we're sharing some of this information that you could address that, the hope would be that you would have people come out and say, this is important. And then, when you have your community design team creating that scaffold plan over 10 years, hopefully, they would be the messengers about, yep, this is where we'd like to go in the future. So, you, you're doing the background work, putting those pieces in place for that 2021. I'm not as concerned about it as maybe, you know, a year and a half or so, when you look at all of those pieces a year and a half ago.
And I think apart from the logistics, the big thing I took from what Peter said too, is, for the national election and the state election, you're gonna have a huge turnout. And to be not drowned out by all the other messages, whereas if you go in 2021, your, your people who are actually gonna turn out, it's easier to get the message to them, and hopefully, the percentage would be more supportive.
I totally agree with what you just said there, Mike. And I, and Shelley, your point, I have the same concerns as well. And I think, I mean, really well said, Denise, that we're working right now to, I mean, we're building a story, and all this work we've been doing, right? I think if we, we can figure this out, and all of these tough components out, we, we'll be able to go to the community and say, we feel really good about this, we're on board. And, and then, we can begin, you know, as ambassadors, communicating this positively to the community. And I, I agree with Denise, I'm not, I like, yes, it's a little scary, at the same time, we're showing the community that we've taken the time to really dive into these issues, that the strategies that, and the, the survey that the community responded with, and we're listening to it intentionally, and looking at the dollars, and I, I, I wanna sell something that I can feel that we've really hit the pros and cons on. And I think we're in that process right now, and I feel 2020 is a bit of a gamble and a bit of a rush, and I don't, I don't know that we're there just yet, but we could be there for that next one and feel good about it.
I was just gonna touch on again to Peter, he shared that there are some things our community supports, and if you look at your priorities, it's the same things you've been talking about. So, that's really compelling message that you can go to your community, and if you can tie those things together, even if a multiple question, if they're tied together around those two or three things that the community is telling us in 80% or higher numbers that they support, I don't know why you couldn't be successful, as long as everyone's come together, we have a clear message, and we have that time to be able to share it and get people engaged and excited with it.
Yeah. The scary part of 2021 is what happens if it doesn't pass. And you gotta share it, and you gotta stand behind that. But, that's gonna scare half of us, but we gotta convey part of that as well.
The other piece for me is, I feel like we have facility needs, like, that are kind of urgent. And we, you know, the bond piece, to me, we need to be maybe a little more aggressive about. That's the question for me, and, and I heard him say that, you know, we shouldn't do a bond without the operating levy to support the costs, you know, associated with additional, whatever the additional space is. But, I'm a little bit worried about the idea of, you know, I know, one of the things that's coming, that's coming loud and clear through the community design team is, you know, basically, replace Lake Elmo. And, Lake Elmo is already really crowded, and it's subpar right now. So, if we, if we wait until 2021 to pass that bond, who knows what the economy's gonna do between now and then? And, then it's that much longer before we get that new building, if it passes. You know? I, I just worry about that a little bit. I, I am nervous about trying to run multiple questions during the presidential election, but I wonder if our community is one of those ones where there's just already enough, you know, there's already enough awareness and interest and engagement from our community? We have a pretty engaged community. I don't know.
So, are you saying the bond, or the bond and levy?
I'm, I'm wondering if we look at, and I'm, I'm completely open-minded, I'm just gonna throw this out there, but a bond and, and a levy in 2020. And if the levy doesn't pass in 2020, then we come back again in 2021. And maybe we just look at two questions that are tied together, bond and levy.
So, if I, if, but what about if we were, you know, when we get from the community design team the recommendation, maybe it's not, you know, we, it was extra cost to have the pack, like, there was operating costs associated with that. But if we're just replacing like for like, maybe there's not increase in operating, and maybe we could go for just the bond at that time. But we don't, we don't know yet, right? What's gonna be.
Or, or go for just replacing the levy, not, not increasing it, but just replacing it. Because, like you said, there's, it's an 80% something plus chance of it passing if it's just a replacement.
But then, when do we go for an increase?
I think we should go for an increase in 2020, if we were gonna do it in 2020. But I think that even makes it harder to pass, you know? I think they said, what was the statistic they gave us when we went to that referendum? It was like 58% pass during a presidential election, and like 73% if it's a non? Something like that. I, oh, I just remember, it was a pretty significant difference, if it's a non-presidential election.
That just came to mind, I said this, Sarah, was during the presidential election, you don't have as many people.
Right, because they're doing.
Because they're doing other stuff.
Because everyone's busy.
Regardless of whether it's a bond or.
You've got volunteers.
Volunteers.
Orders.
And if you're door knocking, you've got like, a pile, okay, here's president, here's this, here's.
Well, that's why you talk about the attention.
Recycle.
Yeah.
And the piece with the bond, that I, the only part with the bond that would, that we may not have the answer to, is with regard to pathways or something like that, is if there's something that, as part of that piece, would need to be changed at the high school, you may not have that answer yet.
There's a, right, and there's a lot of work, like, even if we look at Lake Elmo, if we're looking at a January recommendation from the design team, remember how long it took us to find a spot for the bus garage? People aren't necessarily saying, come build the school here, because, you know, it doesn't help your tax base, right?
I was just gonna say that.
Perfect example is hurry child. Family Center.
Right, yeah, that was a huge thing.
Well, and look at the bus garage.
At one time, at one time, Lake Elmo wanted it.
I know, I.
Cost us six months.
Can't you start looking for land before we go to the voters?
Can you be looking for land today? I can certainly start looking for land.
For what?
For the school.
If we, if we did a 2021 bond, when would students be able to occupy the building? Is it 2023? So, I mean, it's quite a few years off. That's, I mean, that's what's hard, is that it's so far out.
This won't be enough. By 2023, I think, we're gonna have problems at Lake Elmo.
Well, it won't be enough, but it'll, it's a, like, stopgap, right? It'll help, because you, you, we can't do more to this building. I mean, there's not, there's not, the footprint isn't enough to do more for this. So, this would be a, you know, help, help ease, help ease the crowding, because you can see now that, you know, we have people where they really, kids where they really shouldn't be. And we do have some concerns about our classrooms coming up, that we have a couple that are full at, or that are gonna be maybe another section, isn't it a K and 2 of Brookview? Are coming forward.
But, but here's what I hear you saying, and it's legit, I'm not denying that, 2020 would be, it's, it's very late for 2020 right now. I mean, just from that point.
I would think in a normal year, you might be okay, but the fact, and Peter said this very clearly, when you are competing with all of the noise of the presidential, it will be very difficult, even if we could turn around our message in the next couple of months. In a normal election, you can kind of really hit hard in the fall, but with this one, you're gonna have so much noise in the fall in 2020, that you have to get your message out early or get lost.
And the noise is starting already.
It already is.
Absolutely, it is.
It's only gonna get.
So, that's the challenge. If we were ready today with all of our messaging and had it all figured out, we'd probably be fine, but knowing we have a couple months before we'll be to that spot, that's when you're gonna be in the craziness of the election cycle.
And I, I had mentioned this, I know there've been times in years past where we've had to be creative about building use, right? When the 10th graders had to go to another building for a year or two, or, you know, and so not ideal, but, you know, maybe, maybe it's gonna come to that where we have to find a temporary solution, but if we are more certain we could pass it in 2021, then that's probably what we need to.
Well, that's part of the, why we just need a direct, so, if we have the direction, all of that stuff, in addition to planning for the, a bond levy, that's the type of stuff that sets us into motion, because the next question to answer, so if you say, yep, we're looking at 2021, now it's, what's the stuff between now and 21 that we can do that will be low-cost and/or no-cost to get us by in this area, this area, and this area, that we can get out there and start planning with you to pull off, so that, yeah, you might have to spend some money, but you're not spending millions of dollars for a short-term solution, but looking at something to do differently, because you know your plan is to go on 2021, and it's by 2023 to have X, Y, and Z in place.
Yeah. Keep in mind, too, that, the, the group that I see, community design team, Lake Elmo's a high priority, it just is, it's their top priority. But you can't sell just Lake Elmo as much as it's needed, you gotta sell it in the whole district.
And for me, yeah, Shelley, your point is well-taken, again, the, the concern is with, and I, I understand, I mean, I'm with you in the, in the concern with Lake Elmo. My, where I'm at is that if we were to put it to 2020, for example, the bond, there are so many variables in play that we may not have any control over, and we're rushing something that, that we may face, oh my gosh, we're really in a pickle now, because we're not ready. There's variables with the, with the comp plan, with the zoning, in, in, for, in the city of Lake Elmo, for example, that is a continual, continual issue, and those are variables that are, they don't go away, they're there. So, I guess, for me, if we were to say, you know, here's our concrete, you know, 2021, this gives staff the opportunity to really delve in, take the time, look at those variables without some, being able to be more prepared on the front end and procedural with it, so we're not surprised at, you know, going for something that we find out, uh-oh, you know, we weren't planning for this. Kind of like Mike's point with the ECFE, I mean, that's another, yet another example of that, so, that's where I'm at.
Well, and I think, so, I don't know, Denise, you know, maybe we'll add something to the bond that is regarding the career pathways, and that will give us time to see how that program is progressing. And I mean, we do want a career pathways center, and we just don't know that yet, we don't know what the plan is, so.
We really wanna tell a good story, you know? I think, take an example from White Bear Lake, they took a long time to get everything just in place the way that they wanted to pull off that, that referendum. And it takes a long time, because you want everybody on the same page.
Well, any word alone, I mean, you look at that, all of those that passed, I was sort of like, oh my goodness, I hope we didn't miss the wave, you know?
I just remember when they start, I mean, they started that process well before they decided, we're gonna go out for this, so, that planning is important.
So, do you need, do you need any, with our remaining dying minutes here, any discussion
So do you need, do you need any, with our remaining dying minutes here, any discussion on, you know, beyond timing? If we're, again, kind of moving toward 2021 as being the timing for at least an operating levy referendum? Do you need additional direction on, you know, what are our priorities with curriculum with, with those?
We will, but I don't know that we need those necessarily today. Today, what would be helpful is for everyone to say, yeah, it seems like we're looking at this. Because what I'm hearing is it isn't just a bond or levy. It's probably a combination of both. It's really, what's the, what's the appetite for 2020 or 2021?
Yeah. Well, a good point because Shelley's raised it, something you want to think about pretty seriously because if, if you're going to go 2020.
We need to know now.
Start feeding us because I think the board's got to take a position that's just not enough time or it won't work or whatever, but convey that. But if you agree, and, and thank you Shelley for putting that out there, it's better to take a stab at it now. Well, just think about that and convey it to each other and whatever.
I just want to be clear on the Brookview addition. There are two pre-K classes currently. One of them, for some reason, didn't get highlighted. So that won't change. And there are currently two second grade classes and that won't change. So it's really four additional classrooms, not six.
No, no, no. There's, there are two new pre-K over here.
Yep, and there are two over here too.
Yeah, but they're not, they're, they're not in the space that they're supposed to be in.
Right, but there's still, that's not additional students.
It's additional space.
Right.
Oh, well, they're, they're, they're limited currently to 16.
No, I understand it's four physical, I mean, it's, it's six physical classrooms, but it's not four additional class spaces for students. That's what I'm saying. So it's really just.
You're saying you can't fit 100 more students?
Right. So it's adding one of each, one, it's adding three, four, and fifth, third, fourth, and fifth grade classes. Right?
So that's the question. How many more students can utilize that school than are right now?
I thought it was 100 to 150. But if we're just. Again, this was just a drawing of six, not the eight. We haven't gotten to the concept, well, I have the concept drawings that were looked at two years ago from that, that shows us eight classrooms. And so you figure, I mean, conceptually speaking, we're making, we're going from 450 kids to 600. I mean, that's the concept.
To this question, right now, we're just using other people's spaces that aren't going to be classroom spaces. I never thought about that.
So I think the, the idea is that you're, you're putting the kids back into appropriate spaces.
Right.
If you had to, if you had to grow in the future even more, well, you could go back to the model that we're currently using, right? You could even put more kids back in the spaces that there now. But the, the idea is to put the kids into appropriate spaces.
So with currently we're adding, so we're actually adding.
What you're doing by adding six classrooms essentially is you're putting the building back to the way it was designed to be, plus some additional, some additional space for kids. If you add eight, that's a whole different concept, like Kristen said, that's a whole different concept drawing because it changes how those larger spaces are configured. It, it looks different. That's why we kept it simple at six.
Six is a better.
Can I just identify, to be respectful of time, just to provide you some framework financially? You have the revised budget in hand. We've talked about those numbers. That is coming to you on Thursday with adoption on the 19th. What that then does is that leapfrogs our entire system into next fiscal year, of which I'll present a three-year graph, you know, kind of show you our trajectory based on the final, our, the budget committee assumptions, which will help you maybe frame where you are with not only your budget items or the, you know, the priorities that Dr. McDowell or Kathy or whomever has talked about today, plus the sheets that were provided of what were the reductions last year, what was on, on the list as you develop your priorities so we can move forward with how, not saying how do you want to spend your money, but you can be planful on what you add or remove, moving into three years, knowing you're coming into an op and how much money you are, would be looking to add in addition. So it's, it's a good leapfrog moment. Just be aware that that's coming. That's kind of what I'm, you know, you'll, you'll be seeing me again January, February, as soon as I can get that model up and running based on our most current numbers to see what the next three years looks like as you plan out. Is that helpful?
I'm sorry, can I ask a more question? So if we had six classrooms, it's basically going to be able to add just third, fourth, and fifth grade? And then if we added two more to do eight, what classes would that add? What grades would that affect?
Wherever the bubble is. And we mentioned that kindergarten seems to be, we're a little bit concerned that we might need another section of kindergarten for next year than we planned. So it will be there if second grade numbers bubble up. It just depends on.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yep, it just depends on how kids, you know, the kids in the housing that come in, what age levels they are that bubble up.
Well, I was going to ask, typically, don't you have one more section of kindergarten and first grade than you do for older grades because you have smaller class sizes there?
Right.
So in this model, with the addition, you have four sections of everything, right? And then instead of five sections of kindergarten, five sections of first grade, instead you have those two preschool classrooms on the end.
Yeah, I mean, you are adding, I mean, just simple numbers. If you look at fifth grade, for example, across the top, you currently have three, point, I think, Sarah, you have three classrooms now in fifth grade. You're going to have the ability to have four classrooms of fifth grade.
Right.
If you add on. Same for fourth, same for third, same for second. So an additional section.
But not for kindergarten and first grade?
Well, if you do eight, you do.
Well, but I'm looking at.
You have pre-K.
Yeah.
Isn't part of it though, that you want to be able to be somewhat flexible based on where the bubbles are? And so maybe it's not even so much assigning them to a grade level, just knowing you have space so that when those kids come in at whatever grade level they are, you have room for them.
So it's not going to divide mathematically?
It never does.
Yeah.
So in other words, if you only have four sections of kindergarten and four sections of first grade, then typically, once those students move up to third, fourth, and fifth grade, that's going to go down to three sections, not four.
It could.
It could.
So then the preschool might be over here on the end of third grade, for example, or fourth grade.
That's exactly what typically happens in any building.
Or wherever it ends up happening to be where there's a space. So this is assuming four sections kindergarten and first, and then smaller for third, fourth, and fifth.
Again, it was just to provide a visual of what it could look like. It's not saying that there will be four sections of each. It's, I mean, obviously Mark would adjust the building as he needed for the.
Of course, of course. I'm just, yeah. I guess the question is, do we need four sections of the older grades? And if so, we probably need five sections for kindergarten and first. But if we think we only need three sections for the older grades, then four sections for kindergarten and first is probably fine. Just in terms of a ratio, I'm just talking about.
And I think that's where the different designs, you've got, you've got potential for eight and we've talked about six to eight classrooms.
Well, this, this model, does this satisfy the need for pre-K?
Not if we get another kindergarten class. I mean, that's, you know, it, that's where, you know, Sarah mentioned earlier, whatever we would do to Brookview, if we would do the addition, it's going to help alleviate some of the space issues right now, but with the growth, it's not going to be enough. I think we've all known that since the beginning. It's going to have other things, but there's not more that you can do to Brookview. Brookview, you know, those were, when it was planned, it was planned to add on to these rooms. And, but that's all that that footprint can take. So, you know, that will help a little bit, but you're still, you know, you'll still have more to do.
Shelley.
Sorry, just to close the loop on the bond and levy, because we can't take action here. Do we need to take official action or is it hearing our conversation, you know?
It's, you know, you might want to have, and I can do this either in superintendent of date or Mike in the chair, I think it's great to let the public know. You don't need a decision. When you get to the point where, yes, you're going to do that, then we prep you to be ready for that. But this is more internally and then just public communications to be able to say, we've had lots of conversations, this is what we feel and we're going to do the work to get us ready for the 21st. You don't need a formal decision because you aren't.
So you don't need like a, a formal action and unanimous voting on it, right? But I do think communication needs to be perhaps by chair and superintendent that.
And I would say there's pretty clear consensus already that we are, we need to figure out where a new Lake Elmo building would be, whether it's on that site or whether it's on a different site, I think.
Well, I will accept that recommendation, you know, Brooks' recommendation.
You said, you want me to start looking for sites? I would say, yeah, you should probably start doing that.
Well, then what we, back to.
That's an option. We definitely.
What we do need to know, what, what can't happen is we leave this meeting and us thinking, yep, it's 2021, and then we hit January, mid-January, and the board says, no, actually, we were thinking 2020. You've put us way behind. So unless we hear 2020, we're leaving this meeting.
We're leaving it as 21.
We're 20, we're going, planning for 21. Is that a fair? I guess that, that's what we're asking. Is that a fair assumption right now?
Well, I, I think I, I've raised that earlier too, is that if you, even given one night and, and you say, you wake up tomorrow and say, no, we should have at least put a feel